The meeting in order, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Here.
Depeña?
Here.
Gracianno?
Here.
Moltari? Moltari? Rovell?
Here.
Councilmember Burke? Councilmember Burke? And Mayor Melham?
Here. Plaid allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the Constitution of America, and to the Constitution of the United States, with the highest authority in the world.
Sunshine?
Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231 Public Law, 1975, the Sunshine Law, the Honors of this meeting was published in the Thursday, December 22nd, 2022, editions of the Bellevue Times and Starlighting. The Sunshine was complied with by adopting a稿 into the press, posting a file with the Municipal Bureau, the annual resolution showing the date, time, and place of each regular meeting, and a copy of the annual meeting notice has been posted on the Town Hall Bulletin Board.
Thank you, sir. Next on the agenda is a proclamation presentation. So with that, I'm going to hand it over to Mr. Cosarelli, who has a presentation to Dr. Tomko by Ducey. Hello, sir. How are you, sir?
Your Honor, how are you?
I got confused. I thought we were in a board of ed meeting. I'm still here, so.
This one's going to be a little quicker.
Yeah. Yeah, so thank you, Mayor. So for everyone who doesn't know, our superintendent, Dr. Tomko, had received a pretty prestigious recognition from a very notable organization. So we'd just like to show our acknowledgement and appreciation of that. So if you want to come up here and stand at the mic and I'll... It's not a roach, so I'm going to... I'll keep it PG. Whereas Dr. Richard Tomko, Bellevue Superintendent, had been chosen to be one of the eight leaders to learn from in 2023 by Education Week. Whereas prior to his arrival in the Bellevue Schools District, Dr. Tomko held the positions of Director of Athletics, Assistant Principal, Principal Assistant Superintendent, and Superintendent of Schools in several public school districts in multiple counties. Eight leaders were selected from more than 300 nominees submitted by readers, journalists, school administrator groups, and education experts. Prior to Dr. Tomko's arrival in 2015, Bellevue Schools had been placed on state oversight over years of financial mismanagement, and thanks to him and his incredible faculty, staff, and administrative team, they were able to overcome this and start projects like teaching life skills to 18- to 21-year-old students with disabilities and expanding early childhood education, to name a few. Whereas the mayor and municipal council of the Township of Bellevue find it fitting to honor Dr. Richard Tomko for his display of dedication, commitment, and perseverance through his efforts, and did an outstanding job, and is richly deserved of this congratulations. Now for be a resolve that the mayor and municipal council of the Township of Bellevue recognize the excellence and devotion exhibited by Dr. Richard Tomko and wish him continued success in his years to come.
The mayor? Get the mayor back.
Hey, give me right the bell.
Give us a martino. Get martino in here, Tom. Let's go. Our entire administrative team is here just to show that we appreciate working with your honor, the mayor, council, the rest of the township. I've been here eight incredible years. This is an incredible place. No place like it. I stood up here, I think, my second week here. The council wanted to meet me at the time. It was 2015. And the district was in a lot of trouble. You know, we were in major deficit, and we had a long way to go. So with the team behind me here, the faculty, the staff, the parents, the incredible students, and all of you, moving forward, we say progress. Thank you very much. We really appreciate it. Thank you for this. Dr. Tomko wanted me to announce that after the meeting, drinks are on him. Congratulations, Doctor. We're actually going to just give a 30-second recess in case anybody that's here wants to exit. Vinny, Dr. Tomko said when Anthony gets an award, they're going to... When Anthony gets an award. Okay, everybody, moving on with our meeting. Next on our agenda is report of our non-award-winning. Yet, yet, Mr. Manager.
Thank you. Yes. Good evening, everyone, and mayor and council. We have a brief... We have a brief agenda tonight, but I did want to point out one resolution on the consent agenda, and that's a partnership with St. Anthony's parking lot. So just so everyone understands what we're doing. And we're actually reaping the benefit of development. A developer came in, built a project, and now because of the capital outlay that they're required to give us as far as a community revenue, we're able to partner with St. Anthony's in which we're going to repave their lot, line it, add some additional lighting, some fencing, fix some sidewalk, and we're going to put a parking station, a meter in the lot. The revenue is going to be split, 80% to the town, because obviously we're laying out the capital outlay, and we're doing a good thing for a church that could use all the revenue that they can get, so they gain 20%. But keep in mind, all of the expenses on this particular project are not being paid with tax dollars, but they're being paid through the community development, coming from development. So, you know, again, people always talk about development coming into a neighborhood. There was never parking in the first place, so now we're creating additional parking. In several ways, we have the light rail, so this is going to be a plus-plus. I'd also like to point out that on tonight's agenda, as scheduled, we are introducing the 2023 budget. It's a municipal budget. There was a lot of work done on this, and I'm going to use the word that the budget debt we're introducing is a very professional budget. I can assure you it's a budget that we haven't seen before. The first thing I'm going to point out, and I did send it to everyone on a PDF, so, you know, we have a couple of weeks to really review it, take time. There's going to be a lot of questions. But even before you get to the first sheet, you have received a municipal budget workbook. And what this is, is a summary of past expenses and projections. We're actually, in this workbook, we're actually projecting budgets to 2020-28. So not only are we introducing a budget 23, we're doing projections on municipal budget to 2028. We've never done that before. That's long-term planning. And again, it's a projection, so I can't guarantee in 2028 that the budget's going to be $82 million, but based on the workbook, based on the summary, based on the data that we used to get to where we are today, we're doing... It's a lot more than just presenting the budget. So that's pretty... I think that's pretty special going forward. The budget itself is $77.2 million. That's up about a million dollars from last year. And, you know, we do have some revenues the first time. The first budget that we're going to be adopting is going to have the pilots in it. We're picking up $850,000 worth of pilots. We've had this conversation, all the advantages of payment of little taxes, where we keep more and have to give less to the county and Dr. Tomko. On the appropriation side, there's going to be a lot of questions because this budget is being done correctly. It's almost like what we call a zero-based budget. There's going to be a lot of questions, which I would anticipate from the council and certainly from the public, because there's large discrepancies. Because instead, and I'll just give you an example, instead of spending its $365,000 in four different departments, we did it the correct way. We put everything on the one budget, and it looks like there's $198,000 increase on that line item. But then when you back into it, you see last year, that number was charged in four different areas. Same thing with recreation, there's a big increase in the increase of recreation salaries. But if you take a look at where that was all spread out. So I anticipate a lot of questions because this budget is not the norm. This is... And again, I use the word professional because we have, again, Frank's a CFO, but he's much more than a CFO. He's an RMA. He's a CPA. He's an auditor. And the amount of work that he has done to get us where we are today, and where are we today on the average of $278,000 home? The municipal share would be going up $89. And again, this is the introduced budget. We can certainly... We're still going to, after we submit it to the DCA, we still could possibly amend it in the future if something happens. If there is a white elephant in the budget, there's no hidden secret. It's health insurance. We're up to $17.9 million. That's what we spend on health insurance from $16.6. For the last 12 months, we have been working to see how do we address that white elephant. We were leading towards the state plan, and we were thinking that maybe we can introduce a package where we can join in with the state. And that was, we were thoroughly looking at that plan until we realized that their annual increase went up 23%. So that idea went out the window. So we know that for the next 12 months, we really have to come up with a solution to $16.6... Spent $16.6 million last year, $17.9 this year. And it's only going to go up. It's not going to go down. So we really have to... If there's one thing that we really have to see, get a handle on to see what we can do, we're in negotiating with two unions. Little baby steps. New employees don't get the same package of some of the employees that benefit today. You know, we have to just... We have to be creative because obviously $17.9 million is a very tough pill, pun intended, to swallow when it comes to benefits. So that's basically the summary of the introduction. Obviously, we'll have a public hearing. I anticipate great dialogue. I anticipate more questions in this budget than ever because of the discrepancies. But again, it's a budget that we're confident with, which certainly are not trying to sound corny, but we're actually proud of the amount of work. And again, I take our hat off to Frank and the entire finance team, and I'm sure we're going to have a very healthy dialogue.
Frank, did I miss anything? A good recap?
That's my report, and I'm always open to questions.
So we can have some dialogue if you want about the budget. Really, this is not for the... I'm going to mention some things during my mayor's report, but just two quick points I'd like to make. After today, will the budget be available to the public? Some way, shape, or form?
Tomorrow morning. You have to wait for your action tonight.
It might be online, or it might be digital, but we're going to make it available to the public tomorrow. Number two, health went up 1.3 million, and understand, 350 employees all get on average 2% increases. That's a big number. Yet, the budget only went up a million dollars. That's because of the additional revenue that we generated here that we've never had before.
And control spending.
Yep. So I'm going to say a few more things in my mayor's report, but any specific technical questions right now to the manager? We all have a copy of the draft budget, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So we'll have more discussion on that, and I know we have Frankie here for public commenting as well. Okay, so without further ado, then, to move on to the report of the mayor. Bear with me, got a few things today. We had, starting with some past events, as most of you know by now, we had a really nice ceremony, my hats off to manager. I know council people were involved in that, DPW. So we honored Lonnie Bunch with a street dedication. It was an excellent event, very well-attended. He was very grateful. I had about 45 minutes privately to spend with him in my office, and he was, I can tell you for a fact, he was absolutely touched by the outpour of support he received. And we're actually already making plans to have him back here potentially for next February. Also, past events, we had storytime in the copper library. Thank you, Chief, for that. Upcoming events, I'm going to go quick, we have a bunch as we get into springtime now. So upcoming events, this coming Saturday, a whole bunch of things happening in Bellevue. Saturday, April 1st, our Easter egg hunt. We have a century-friendly, one going off at 10:00 a.m. Then we have from 11:00 to 1:00 is the general event. That's going to be at school number 7. It's also March, the return of Timples the Clown. She will be here. More information's on our social media and our website. Also, on April 1st, we have rock painting going on at the Community Pocket Park at 321 Division Avenue. That's going to be between 12:00 and 2:00. So hopefully, the thinking is you end the Easter egg hunt, you just take yourself a little walk right down the street. It's going to be the '70s on Saturday, a great day to do that. Again, more information is on our website for that. Also, on Saturday, April 1st, starts the beginning of the Cherry Blossom Festival. Cherry Blossom Festival is a two-week event that happens in Branchwood Park, which is shared between Newark and Bellevue. I was on hand last Friday for a press conference with Joe D., our county executive. He does a great job at that. This coming Saturday, it starts with a bike run. On Sunday is the 10K race. Yours truly will be running in that race, and there are ongoing bets on the over-under on what my time is going to be. The Bellevue Police Department's having a bike rodeo on Saturday, April 22nd. And thankfully, we have the Division of Motor Vehicles. They're going to be in town with their mobile unit. It's going to be in town twice, but the first one that we're promoting is on Wednesday, May 3rd. Information's on the website. You must register. Slots do fill up. That's the real ID. That's all kinds of great stuff. Slots do fill up, so register for that nice and early. That's the upcoming events. News, obviously, most of you know, a major motion picture is being filmed in Bellevue. By the time we meet again, it'll be all over, thankfully, so will the traffic and the congestion and the complaints and everything else. But we're doing a great job welcoming them. Bellevue is not the first motion picture, not the first filming that's happening in Bellevue. They find us to be very warm and friendly to them, so we're wishing them all the best. I've not seen the first Joker, but I'm interested to see it before it starts. So my cherry blossom trackers online, in case you're very curious on where we are, we are blooming right now. Give it another couple weeks. We expect to be in full blossom by this weekend because the weather is cooperating. Check that out. The Budget Committee, as you heard from the manager, the Budget Committee met for the first time only yesterday. So this budget is kind of new. It's literally hot off the press. We've been on emails and different exchanges for the last couple of weeks. Again, I know the manager, thank Frank, excellent job he did. So the Budget Committee consisted of myself, Deputy Mayor Gracianno, Mr. Cosarelli. We peer through it yesterday. It meant our approval to get on the agenda today, so now the rest of the council will digest it. There will be more meetings to come with department heads, with the Budget Committee, and also with our professionals as we... After we submit it, we are going to submit it this year to TRAD, right? Yeah? Last year, we passed it just... Frank, make a note, we got to actually send it to TRAD this year. We'd actually like that to happen. Walter Decided Street Parking is now back in effect, starting Monday, April 3rd. Actually, this is going Monday. I had an Estes County Mayor's Call this morning. One of the things that we talked about was the de-camp bus. I know Brian was in the room. So ridership went from 90,000 trips a day to 1,200, which is why they can't cut it. We've been in close contact with Mickey Sherrill's office, and the county's now involved in seeing what we can do to actually get some of that ridership back. I mentioned Estes County Cherry Blossom Festival this weekend, and we were awarded a grant. The grant we were awarded, I know Councilwoman Depeña was involved in that, it was to support the expansion of the Bellevue Arts and Crafts Program, and funds will be directly used toward the salaries of two new part-time staff members who will be added to the program for the sole purpose of assisting youth participants with special needs. So that's a great thing happening in our rec. department. Not every single kid or child plays sports, so the fact they can get involved in arts and crafts is actually a great thing. Again, hats off for the second time in this mayor's report to DPW. We have shade at the dog park, so as summer comes, we will have nice shade, two different shade... Shade? Umbrellas? I like it. Also, DPW, they're working hard lately. They are online on Facebook, so if you have any complaints, issues, or concerns about anything going on in town, garbage pickup, litter, potholes, you don't necessarily have to message me on Facebook. You can now go directly to the DPW page. I love that. That was great. The police department's taking applications for the Junior Police Academy. Police Department also has the Take Me Home program. We encourage all people to register for that. Two different events coming up at the county, whether it's hazardous waste or computer recycling, that's May 6th and May 20th respectfully. And lastly, always check out our website for some great events that are happening there. Last part about that is the Cherry Blossom Festival. It's a two-week thing, so there's a bike ride this Saturday, it's a 10K race this Sunday, but there's also a one-mile run the following week. There's a family day. They do a lot of great things. They end it all with Bloom Fest. It's, we get over 100,000 tourists that visit that park, again, which is situated between Bellevue and Newark. It's also a boost to our local economy, which is why we do the press that we do leading up to it. That's it for me. Next on the agenda is the approval of minutes. Line conference, regular meeting of March 14. Yes, we do. We have a motion made in second to move that. For the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Gracianno?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
And Mayor Melham?
Yes.
The minutes are approved.
Next on the agenda is communications. The Peruvian... That's you, right? Have a... I'm just going with the Peruvian Rish United Association, who represents Peruvians in and around Bellevue, New Jersey, is requesting a flag raising on Town Hall on July 7th at 10:00 a.m. The clerk wants everybody to know that new bulletin boards have now been installed.
Two.
Two. I've seen that. They're on the opposite wall, so you have to actually turn around. It's the opposite wall, but they're there. And I saw a whole bunch of documents attached there.
Thank the Township Manager.
It's all going good. Lastly, C, the clerk's office received a letter from Mr. Joe Marinelle, Planning Board Attorney, with respect to the Planning Board's consistency review of ordinance 07-23 to adopt amending Chapter 23 zoning. The Planning Board review said the ordinance is at their March 9, 2023 public meeting. Office, I got it. That's it. Four communications. Next item is ordinances. Ordinances for possible adoption.
This is ordinance 7-23, an ordinance amending Chapter 23 zoning for the Township Code in the Township of Bellevue, County of Essex, New Jersey. Motion two, open to the public.
Motion. We have a motion made in second to open to the public. This is a question on this ordinance and this ordinance only. You have a comment or a question, please raise your hand, come forward, that you name an address for the record. Open. Yeah? Okay.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
Depeña?
Yes.
Gracianno?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Now we are open for public commenting. Mr. Frank Tantoni.
Good evening. What did we change in this?
So if you look at the ordinance, there's a whole bunch of definitions. That's the first change. Definitions are always good because I always find it eliminates gray areas for the decision-makers, being able to make arbitrary decisions. So we're now quantifying what a carriage house is, what a chair massage is...
vape shop.
What a vape shop is, what a cigar shop is. So we're adding a whole bunch of definitions, and then some of those definitions are then prohibited in certain zones.
Or permitted.
Or permitted. So I'm going in order, so the BA district now has different permitted uses and prohibited uses, but really just by definition. So there's a difference now between a smoke shop and a vape shop. So difference between a check cashing and a valve office. So we amend the ordinances, I'm sorry, we amend or create the definitions. Now we put the uses in the correct zones.
Are we adding any more high-density areas?
The word "high-density" is actually a matter of opinion, but no, it has nothing to do with that. It's all definitions. Okay.
There we go. There's a traveling to fight Bell Street. Just a question. I'm just looking at the... Cigar shops and lounges, all the two different things, correct? Two different... Would they be two separate stores or one store?
If they're defined this way, it's so that they can be two different things.
Two different things. Now, the cigar lounges, that would be just like they have in Lynnhurst, the cigar lounge. You can go in there and smoke. Is there a limit on the amount of cigar lounges that you... Or can be? Now, there's two different zones there. What is the difference between two zones? They're permitted in two zones, like Washington Avenue, I assume, is one of them. What would the other street be?
They're permitted in the BA zone, which is Washington Avenue.
Okay.
BA zone is Union Avenue.
Union Avenue?
Also, Washington.
It says right in there. Yeah, well, I would have that information there. Okay, so is there a limit on the amount that you're allowing? Because years ago, because I know with tattoo parlors, they only limited certain amounts because they didn't want the money.
The market usually limits that. The market usually limits that, meaning two guys are not going to have cigar shops next to each other, cigar lounges next to each other.
Is there no moratorium in the ordinance right now?
Right now, there's not. That's just creating a definition, separating them from smoke and vape shops. Smoke and vape shops are really where the problem was happening at. They're selling marijuana illegally out of them. What I would say about anything else, yeah, moratorium would be probably reasonable on cigar lounges, to have only so many attempts like tattoo parlors.
Yeah, because I know we had a problem with... Remember years ago, tattoo parlors were popping up all over the place, and then we put a limit on them to allow what was there presently, but no above and beyond, just so they don't pop up on every corner. The only other question I have is... Because I'm looking at Washington Avenue, it's quite obvious. That's the main difference. But where on Union Avenue could you... Because you don't want... Because we had a problem with a facility in Blue Flare Avenue in Caldwell some years ago. Neighbors all were complaining about the smoke because it was residential next to it. But what I'm asking you is, they should be away from residential areas. Would you agree or disagree with that? Would you want cigar shops next to your house? And you know they're going to smoke outside, and you're going to breathe that, you know? It's quite obvious.
I would not expect one in a residential area like Rutan State's.
No, I'm talking about on Union Avenue. Let's take Union Avenue.
Well, if you're on Union Avenue, Washington Avenue, in a business district, like a bar...
But I'm just trying to visualize where on Union Avenue was predominantly residential.
I think you're picking on one specific definition for some odd reason, trying to place it somewhere, but this is just a definition we're creating.
What I'm doing is asking a question. It's just my opinion.
Like the corner of Giraham and Union, you have a bunch of stores, right?
Right, right.
Yes.
Something like that, right? Is that what you're talking about?
Corner of Giraham and Union, that's also, that's an area, you'd have around that area, around, like, Graylock where the bar...
Right, that area too.
It's also the Strip Center on Franklin Avenue, that's BA.
Yeah.
So.
So it's all the BA. There's already business there.
And again, if you...
The only reason I singled it out because when you compare Washington Avenue and Paul's to Union Avenue, that's more residential. That's the reason for that.
But there's a sub-district there. It's the BA. You're saying the BA. It's not the whole stretch.
It's not the entire.
It's not the residential. It's the BA.
No, it's not yet.
That constricts it.
Look at the map.
Yeah, it constricts.
I had the map, I wouldn't be asking these questions. You can get it on the website.
Map is on the website.
I know, but it should have been... If we can get the agenda, we can deliver the question.
But really, it's on the website.
The ordinance is...
We can hand-deliver, but it's easier to get on the website.
The ordinance has been available, that same ordinance, has been available to you for two weeks. So...
But was the map available?
Map is on the website 24/7.
Available 24/7. What we have to do is click on.
But I'm convinced that you're going to put an ordinance on it. At least have the map attached to it.
Got it. Next, anybody else? Sure.
Good evening, Michael Sheldon, 47 Floyd Street. Since I'm usually very critical of zoning changes, I want to have a little change of course at first here and actually acknowledge a positive change here with this amendment. I'm referring to section 6.1 subsection C. This involves off-street parking. In particular, this affects the residential zones RA, RB, and RC, and also the PRD zone. But just so that those who are in the audience and at home are watching know what's involved here, subsection C says, "For new construction or major renovation of multifamily and/or mixed-use projects of two or more residential units, open floor plans are encouraged. Floor plans containing additional rooms large enough to contain a bed, such as, but not limited to, a dining room, study, library, office, or den, shall have an additional parking requirement of one space per additional room added to the base parking requirement, included in the table above." We have to see the actual zoning chapter for that. For example, if a dining room is listed on the floor plan of a unit, two parking spaces would be required for that unit. This fortunately, I know you and Mr. Bandad at Planning Board meetings have been talking about this particular loophole that was unfortunately included when the sweeping zoning changes were first implemented in July of 2019. But I'm glad to see that you're tightening up. You're eliminating this loophole that the common ploy made by developers is that they would mark a unit as one bedroom, but with a den or a study.
Let me just clarify for one thing. You mentioned 2019, our sweeping zoning changes, but the SOHO project that predates all of us has many, many units that has dens in it, which is part of the issue today. We're trying to make sure that they're parked. So really, it's got nothing to do with the 2019 sweeping changes, as you say. But the very, very large residential project that predates myself, Mr. Rosiano, Mr. Penha, actually had dens in it. We're trying to actually avoid a problem over there.
And I appreciate that. I agree with your efforts to.
That was a little prior administration, just so you know.
Oh, I'm aware of these matters, but I'm glad that at long last, that you're removing this loophole, that it shouldn't be the case that a developer can after the fact change a den or a library or study into another bedroom unit and thereby dodge the parking requirements. So I did have a question, though, about the permitted and non-permitted uses, the changes here. And I'm just trying to understand the differentiation here. In, for example, in the BA zone, which again is Union Avenue and the strip mall on Franklin, you're allowing cigar shops and cigar lounges, but you're prohibiting smoke shops and vape shops. Now, you know, to a layperson, it seems to be six of one, half a dozen the other. Both businesses are fundamentally selling tobacco products and, you know, feeding nicotine addiction. So I just don't want the township to wind up with litigation that someone.
I appreciate your need for no litigation, but if you're just listening to Mr. Bandad, who's our planning gaze explanation, we have not had any issues with cigar shops, because one, we only have, I think, one. We have not noticed any uptick in crime or them selling illegal products like cannabis, but we have had those issues with vape shops, which is exactly why we're separating the two.
All right, but then couldn't a cigar shop also legally start selling cannabis?
It could, but we sort of have not had any issues with them. We've had issues with vapes.
And it's happening in neighboring towns too, which is, the proof is in the pudding. It's happening in Nutley in the vape shops. So before it's an issue here, this is a preemptive.
It's a different customer, vape shop, cigar shop.
All right, but I know, it seems like in the end, it's going to wind up lawyers arguing with one another that fundamentally, a cigar shop on paper would be no ostensibly different than a smoke shop or a vape shop. If they're doing other illegal illicit things behind the scenes, that's another matter. But if they're only, if both shops are both, are on paper selling tobacco products only, and that's the understanding, then it seems to mean that you would be discriminating against one type of proprietor in favor of another, when at least fundamentally, they are selling essentially the same product.
Thank you.
Cigar lounges and cigar shops are regulated also by the state, as opposed to smoke shops and vape shops. So cigar lounges and their specific requirements that they first have to meet with the state before they even come here to put a cigar shop or a lounge. So that's why there is, they are different. They're not the same. So there's different categories, just so you know.
Anything else, Mr. Sheldon?
No, just those were the only two things I wanted to mention.
Anybody else in this ordinance and this ordinance only? Eric Nutt, seeing none of them. And a motion to close, move for final adoption.
Motion.
We have a motion made and second to close and move for final adoption. Clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
De Penha?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Orderment 7-23 is adopted. We have next ordinance 0923. This ordinance is up for an introduction. This is an ordinance to exceed the municipal budget appropriation limits and establish a cap ban in accordance to NJS A48, column 4-45.14.
Need a motion for introduction?
Second. The motion made and second for introduction, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
De Penha?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Orderment 0923 is introduced. Next, we have ordinance 10-23. This is also up for an introduction. This is an ordinance to amend the revised general ordinance of the Township of Bellevue, chapter 8-11.1, prohibited left turns designated concerning property located at 74 Washington Ave, 78-102 Washington Ave, and 75-77 Williams Street.
The motion, motion.
Second.
We have a motion made and second, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
De Penha?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Orderment 10-23 is introduced. Next, we have ordinance 11-23. This is also up for an introduction. This is an ordinance to amend the revised general ordinance of the Township of Bellevue, chapter 8-11.1, prohibited left turns designated concerning property located at 630 Washington Ave and 632 Washington Ave.
The motion.
Motion for introduction.
Second. We have a motion made and second, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
De Penha?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
Yes.
Orderment 11-23 is introduced.
Next, this ordinance on the table. Keep it? Okay. Need a motion to open public comment?
Motion.
Second.
The motion made and second to open public comment, clerk, call the roll.
Councilmember Cosarelli?
Yes.
De Penha?
Yes.
Rosiano?
Yes.
Rovell?
Yes.
Mayor Melham?
We are open for public commenting at this point. I'm going to ask anybody that chooses to have a public comment to please raise your hand. Once you're called upon, please state your name and address for the record here at the microphone. We're going to ask that you please keep your comments relatively to the town of Bellevue business. Anybody for public commenting? Eric Nutt?
Here he will. Here he will.
Mr. Frank Tantoni.
Yeah, for regards to resolution, St. Anthony's, where is that lot?
Across the street.
From the church, Franklin Street.
The big lot.
Right. Right. The, the handicap parking spaces, we got a problem with them. The chief said we're going to investigate every year. I know some, in fact, one of my tenants, I don't believe, deserved a handicap parking space. But what you did in front of my lot, we're not painting them properly. You've got two faint lines on the side. If you go to Bloomfield, they got complete bright blue lines and all that, and we're not consistent. Some are blue, across the street from my house on Mount Prospect, they paint white lines instead of blue. The code for handicap is blue. So I don't know, why would we paint some white and some blue and all? And then the meter in front of my laundromat, it was a double meter, so it was obvious, this is for the meter on the right, this is on the left. But because there's a handicap space now in front, they removed one meter, but they left the meter that's at the front of the handicap space. So people are getting confused, especially the people with handicapped licenses. They pull in the space, they see a meter at their front fender, and they put a meter, well, they put in a card, which is another thing and all. So are we going to have some consistency on this? And are we going to thoroughly investigate these people to see if they have legitimate reasons for handicap space? I mean, a person who drives a motorcycle, who, a person could be a crossing guard, a person can carry a mountain bike up the tent stairs and mountain on a bike, so is that the definition of handicapped person? So I'd like that looked into there. The other thing is, with the meters, whether the mayor, the town manager, whoever said that we're only going credit cards to keep up with every other town. I told you the last meeting, Bloomfield, you could put quarters in. We went to the, two, three weeks ago to the phone store up there, put quarters. Montclair, you could put quarters in. Carney, you could put quarters, because they still got the old meters. You can't even put credit cards. North Darlington, you could put quarters in. Every town around us could put quarters. People are complaining. I know three definitely, my customers who have called Town Hall, one who told me she wrote a letter. So there's a lot of complaints about it. People want to go into a restaurant, just pick up an order for five minutes, they want to put a quarter in. They don't want to stop, pull out, put a credit card, and then get charged a fee for it. So if you want to do what all the other towns are doing, let's let people put a quarter in again. It's so convenient, you know? You just put it and you're on your way. So hopefully, we could go back, take that little plate off and allow it. Originally, the meters, we were glad that you put these kind of meters, because they took everything, quarters, credit cards, and apps and all. And then what happened two months later, I says, you stop the quarter. So please, put the opportunity to pay with quarters back in the meters and check. I'd like an answer on these handicap spaces. Who's checking them? And the other thing I told, now it's a month ago, and all due respects to the chief, you still got the two signs up in front of the Alps Club. So that's two spaces, which are, we need them on Washington Ave. Take the sign down, so there are two more spaces that people could park in. And one more sign with signs, the one by Clement Field on Holm Street, somebody knocked the sign down, the crossing up. It's over a month. It's laying on the curb there. Nobody sees it, no town employee, no police see this and that. It's like almost five weeks. Thank you.
Thank you. So being that, I don't think really any of us up here paint curves or do handicap investigations, I'm sure the manager and the chief, and Mr. Frank Tantoni, you don't have to wait every two weeks for a council meeting. You could communicate to the chief or the manager anytime, but I'm assuming you gentlemen heard some of the comments. We don't, we can't fix any of that, but Mr. Manager, I'm sure you heard some of them. And with regard to the meters, I, I said two weeks ago, my mother wants to use change. I have a car full of change I would love to use. It wasn't my decision to go to no change. It just happened internally here within the department. I was actually frustrated about that decision, because I'm the one that gets all the complaints. So I wish we could go back. I don't know if we can, but it's something that we might be able to explore. Anybody else for public comment? Mary.
On resolution number two, I assume that's just a renewal for the water commission? Or is that something new? Well, I mean, B, I mean B, I'm used to numbers, resolution B. Is that a renewal?
We'll let the manager research that and look at that real quick. Do you have anything else?
Yeah, a couple little things here, okay. I've heard a comment before about the healthcare going up, which is really crazy. You said 350 employees. Is that current employees we have, or does that include the retirees?
I believe we're about, don't quote me on it, but we're about 350 current.
Current, but then you have to add, so you don't know how many retirees we have that are also added to the 350?
I don't have the number accessible right now.
I think that would, you know, I'm just curious, what is the total amount we're paying? Those 350 is not the real number. You may have, no, I'm just talking to the manager. That may be 200 additional employees.
I said 350 employees get a 2% raise, is what I said. I wasn't referring to the.
Look, I'm talking about the retirees. How many?
I know, but I was referring to retirees.
But I'm bringing it up, help. I'm bringing about things, you were talking about the help. So how many people are currently getting the total, including, can you research it? I'm asking for an answer right now.
I can give you the answer this way.
I know you can't give it to me right now. That's quite obvious. But I would like to know about that. And the other thing about the budget you mentioned, I think the bottom line is, I listened to him, you're saying you're consolidating for, it's going to be all one budget. I think the bottom line is, is $77.2 million. The bottom line is, okay, now the new budget is going to be, what, 78, 70? You know what I'm saying? That's the bottom line, because it's quite obvious the numbers aren't going to match up. And I just want to touch on one more thing, which we discussed at the last meeting, because I asked you about the affordable housing, and you said there's about like $1.5 million in a fund that developed. What specifically do they do with that money? Just refresh my memory on that.
It's the COA fund. It goes toward $22,000 grants for low income, and not that low, 75, 78,000 household income.
Yes, I remember. No, the reason I brought it up is because, you know, every time, you know, we're looking at affordable housing, I'm dealing with people all the time, and everybody's complaining to me about the rents. So what I was wondering, you have it like, section A, they only allow so many section As, and then boom. It's like, I think Essex County or somebody in this area who's, I know is collecting it, they put an application in, it's 80,000 application, but they only give 22. You've got 60,000 people that can't pay their rent. So my question is, would it be possible for some of that money to help people pay their rent? Is it, no, that was my real question.
That's really a state thing.
State statute. It's like a trust account.
Yeah, that would be interesting to ask them to do some sort of.
You could go to the legislature and try to change it.
Yeah, no, I'm just saying this here, because I know a couple people personally, and I'm like, I don't know what to do, I don't know what to tell you, though. But they were rejected, every single year they're rejected. I would just wondered, you know, sometimes they only need a couple hundred bucks, because this person's only making, this person's only making 1,400 a month, his rent's 1,200. Like, the numbers don't quite match.
But that makes sense, Mary. I mean, but it would have to be state legislator.
Yeah, no, I guess, I guess I was wondering about that fund, that's the reason.
That's specific, that fund's specific for.
No, it's, 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 if you go to the state, they could.
Anybody else for public comment?
State.
No. The state could change it. And that makes sense. Let us use a rental help.
Good evening again, Michael Sheldon, 47 Floyd Street. At the beginning of the evening, when Dr. Tomko was here, the comment was made that Dr. Tomko could be credited for helping resolve a huge deficit that was in place when he started in February of 2015. What wasn't mentioned, for obvious reasons, is the reason he solved, allegedly solved that problem, was because of a $4.2 million loan that the state floated us at that same time, which the taxpayers of Bellevue aren't paying off. So good credit anybody for bailing out the board of ed. It's the taxpayers of Bellevue, not Dr. Tomko necessarily.
I was going to take credit, but I would feel that then everybody in the audience would accuse me of taking credit for it.
Let me, let me, I'm glad to hear that the budget is going to be posted to the township's website tomorrow. We're all concerned about the rapidly rising cost of health insurance. It was quoted earlier tonight by Bistaria Kono, that healthcare is going to cost $17.9 million. But, you know, there's one way that that number could be reduced, and that is by complying with the state law and not giving health benefits to people who are technically part-time. And I'm looking at several of you right now. I'm sure many of you are aware of what's been going on with Wildwood. Three state officials were criminally charged last year, were arraigned the other week for illegally entitling themselves to healthcare benefits, which the state, the AG's office says that most elected officials are not entitled to such benefits. So there'll be more to be said about that in the coming weeks. At the line bunch ceremony last week, which was, again, a wonderful event, so happy to see one of Bellevue's own accomplish such great things in his life.